Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular Town Board meeting of tonight, December 8th. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, two republics which are same, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our minutes of November 24th for our regular Town Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. A couple of announcements. On Friday, which I think is the 12th, from 12 to 2, we'll be having our annual Town Hall Employee and Committee Volunteer Luncheon. So Town Hall will be open. The phones won't be answered until after lunch is over, but anyone who comes will be served. Does anybody else have any other announcements?
Yeah, I -- excuse me. I just wanted to update everybody on the status of the computer technology for the town and the village. Basically, there are some computer servers on the stage behind the curtain in a locked box that serve not only the village, but also the town, or the town and the village. The connection to the village is done. They'll be hooking them up next week, so that basically the village and the town will share the computers that are on the stage, and all the data will be there, and all the data will be backed up off-site automatically, as well as onsite. So we're within a few weeks of being done. The village should be online by the end of the year.
Great. Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else?
We have committee reports.
Yeah, we'll come to that. I'm a little behind, but I'd like to open our public hearing for the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District 2015 budget. We were notified to open it at 6:45, so we'll hold that open. Is there anybody here who would wish to speak to us about the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District budget? The meeting, the hearing will stay open. Before we get to our next public hearing, I'd like to invite Jessica Scott from our Conservation Advisory Board to speak to us on the Pilgrim's Progress Pipeline.
Hello, good afternoon. Good evening, board. For those of you who don't know, I'm a member also of Citizens for Local Power, which is a local group looking on energy issues, specifically around energy resilience here in the Hudson Valley. And so I've suggested that the town of Reinbeck adopt a resolution in opposition to the proposed Pilgrim Pipeline in support of our neighbors across the river in Olster County and further along the river. Wanted to tell you guys just a little bit about the pipeline, and then just answer any questions that you might have. So the Pilgrim Pipeline is a proposed pipeline that will run from Albany down the river, cross over into New Jersey and lead primarily an export market for Bakken crude oil and refined products. Bakken oil is a particularly volatile sort of oil that's produced via fracking, which is a technology that we're all increasingly familiar with. And Bakken has led to recently some pretty traumatic incidents with rail accidents that have led to quite a loss of life because of its particularly volatile nature. Bakken oil is currently transported through New York State using rail and also using garage, and the pipeline will add capacity to that transport. It's not looking to replace any sort of capacity. While pipelines are typically considered a safer form of transport for especially these volatile sorts of oils, they also lead to a lot of leaks. Leaks in pipelines are very hard to detect, and with this sort of oil, it very easily contaminates resources, specifically water resources. So we're here, most of you over there, the reason I'm here, asking us to support a resolution for the Pilgrim Pipeline in support of our neighbors, is that the environment, as we know, is a shared resource, especially our water resources, especially with our reliance on the Hudson in this area. A spill that was anywhere along that pipeline affected our water resources would be very traumatic and very difficult to clean up. And I'm hoping that Reinbeck can stand with our neighbors across the river and support this. I don't have anything else to say. Do you guys have any questions about this pipeline or about the resolution in opposition to the pipeline, which I submitted to you guys?
Thanks, Jess. I just want to say to the board, there was a snafu, it was sent out to you a week or so ago, I think after our last meeting, but it wasn't included with the blast for this agenda, so I apologize for that. If you haven't had a chance to read it, we can table voting on this to our next meeting, but if you have had a chance to read it and would like to vote on it, you know, I would bring it to the floor.
I'm willing.
Yes? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to introduce Resolution 2014-379 opposing the Pilgrim Pipeline. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor of supporting the resolution to protest the pipeline?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Jess. We have a couple of more minutes before we open the public hearing. We open it at 7:00, so I'm going to get some more business done. Bruce, are we approving the budget tonight?
I don't remember whether we set a date to approve it or just the public.
Just the public hearing, so we'll carry it, hold it open?
We can do it if there's no comment, so we can close the public.
Or hold it open. Do you want to close it tonight?
Yeah, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on Vandenberg Cove budget.
Okay.
Your second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Would you guys like to vote? I don't have it, it's not included in hearing either, so I apologize for that. But I'm -- all in favor of approving the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District budget?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I did get a lot of comments from residents, email comments, thanking us for going to bat for them, you know, with the DEC and the state, and Bruce and I and the rest of the board will continue working on that. Okay. How about Resolution 2014-363, I think is a table. That's not quite ready to go, so I'm going to skip on to Resolution 2014-374, approving our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 12 vouchers, 1369 through 1433, 43 checks totaling May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-375, approving our preliminary capital extracts, one check and the amount of $51. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is for the extenders for the railings that we had to fix for the front hall steps. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-376, approving our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I will just point out that we are just end of the year shifting money around on same employees who work two different job titles, and we are slightly over budget in our building inspector for the year, so we'll have to fund another month at the end of the year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-378, setting a date for our annual reorganization meeting. May I have -- I'll make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I skipped ahead, I'm sorry. I got myself next up here. I just want to set the reorganization for January 12th at 6:45. It's the second Monday, as usual. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-377, approving a fireworks permit application. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? The only discussion, I don't see, do we have fire?
It hasn't come through from Chief Asher, but he assured me that he could.
But there's no written approval?
No, but, yeah.
So let's approve it pending receipt of the written approval from the fire company.
You want to hold it over until the next meeting?
I have Chief Asher's assurance that he's reviewed it and approves it.
So, but, okay, never mind.
I'd prefer to wait to get a complete application, but we can vote on it. I mean, I reviewed it. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to vote no. I'd like a complete application.
Or you.
Pardon me? I'm voting no, because it's not a complete application.
Also, I don't know if you noticed, but at the end it says, "Completed application to Barbara Cunningham, Sound Clerk."
It's an old, it's an old form.
Yeah.
So what's the vote?
Yeah, I think we should have a completed application.
So we'll hold it over. We'll bring it, it has to be on the next meeting. It doesn't pass. In advance of our 7 o'clock public hearing, I'll wait on the discussions for after our public hearing. I'd like to thank you all for coming. John, would you like to speak and set the stage for this?
My name is John Lyons. I am an attorney with the firm of Grant and Lyons under the name of the Town of Reinbeck Town Board. The matter, that's the subject of the public hearing this evening, is a proposed amendment to the zoning law, more particularly, it's a proposed amendment to the zoning map. The amendment proposes changing the boundaries of the mining overlay district in accordance with what is depicted on the map that's up here at the front. The purpose of this amendment is to bring the boundaries of the zoning, of the mining district overlay zone in conformity with the provisions of the 2009 Town of Reinbeck Comprehensive Plan. The action that is proposed is that the mining overlay district boundary shall be corrected and amended to be redrawn so as to coincide with the life of mine boundaries of any current existing mines, having valid mining permits in place from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as of the effective date of the proposed local law, using the life of mine boundaries established by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation in connection with those existing valid permits. The provisions of the 2009 Comprehensive Plan, which the board is acting in consideration of, one section, which is Chapter 5, entitled Land Use, page 5.16, sets forth the objective that land uses with the potential to pollute the air, soils, or water should be regulated, and that objective is followed by a number of actions which are recommended. One of those actions reads as follows. Examine and improve regulation of the zoning law concerning mining activities, and amend the law to further restrict such activities to existing active mine sites. Prohibit the placement of new mine sites within the town for the following reasons. Potential disruption of the character of residential areas caused by the heavy industrial characteristics of this land use activity, including associated noise, dust, aesthetics, and traffic. Concern for public health, safety, and welfare when mining is in close proximity to residences and farms. Restrict the number and location of areas in the town where mining activities may take place, since the town will not be permitted to enforce local regulations relating to mining operations. In addition, the Comprehensive Plan in Chapter 3, entitled Reinbeck Tomorrow, establishes a series of tasks to be undertaken by the town in order to implement the Comprehensive Plan. Task number 58 reads, "Examine and improve regulations in the zoning law concerning mining activities, and amend the zoning law to further restrict such activities to existing active mine sites. Prohibit the placement of new mine sites within the town." It came to the attention of the Town Board that the boundaries of the mining overlay district, as enacted in the 2009 version of the town's zoning law, did not comply with the dictates of the Comprehensive Plan with regard to limiting active mines to their life of mine boundaries, and so this amendment is proposed to correct that situation. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to speak to you about the proposed amendment. The amendment is a piece of legislation that is proposed, no action has been taken on that by the Town Board. This is part of the review process that the Town Board is going through as part of making the decision as to whether or not they want to adopt this amendment. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public to speak to the Town Board and voice comments, concerns, and opinions with regard to the proposed amendment. Members of the public will be allowed to speak this evening. Written comment is, can also be received by the board this evening. I'm going to introduce Mark Reminski, who is an engineer, a professional engineer, and Mark is going to take a few minutes and explain to you how this map was created.
Thank you, John.
I want you to invite people to sit in these seats.
There are seats in the front row. If anybody needs a seat, please come on up.
We turn this a little bit to the side. So when people, when people come on Bill Clark wanted to be crossed off, so when people come up, if they're not on the list after you're done with the list, that someone, someone shows over there, and don't forget to open the public camera.
No, it's a little after 7:00. I'm going to officially open the public hearing. I'm not sure if I did that, and--
Make a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Mark Reminski. I'm a consulting engineer and land surveyor, and I was given the task and retained by the Town of Reinbeck to prepare a composite plan that would take into account the three mines that exist on White School House Road. Those three mines being, starting from south and heading north, would be the Von der Leeuwen Soil Mine, the Lebowski Soil Mine, and the Red Wing Soil Mine. And in doing that, part of my task was to not only prepare a composite plan that showed that, but prepare it in a form that would be, that I would be able to hand it over to the Duchess County Department of Planning, so that they could insert it directly into their GIS system, and ultimately prepare a plan that would be suitable for the action that the Town of Reinbeck is considering. So I'm just here to briefly describe how I did that, so the, so that, you know, the town and the public is aware of that. As John mentioned, you know, part of this, you know, the purpose of this meeting and this law is to prepare a plan or revise the plan of the mining district to coincide with the life of mine limits, the currently approved life of mine limits for each one of those soil mines. So what I did was, I went through town records to see, you know, the available plans for each one of those soil mines and their current permitted limits. So I have copies of the, this is actually a copy of the Lebowski Plan, and it shows the, you know, proximity to White School House Road and the life of mine limits located, you know, to the, to the west of White School House Road. Also, here is a copy of the Von der Leeuwen Soil Mine, and with a similar scenario. I had details for these soil mines. I actually worked on them for the various applicants, so in addition to, I just, I also verified all these mining plans within the, within the town files, because part of the approval process required with the DEC for the soil mining, it also requires special permit by the Town of Reinbeck. So in addition to approval by DEC, Town of Reinbeck Planning Board has granted special permit for these various applications. So here's the location of the Von der Leeuwen Soil Mine, and then finally, I went through the, I went through, I went through the records, and this is just flipped a little bit, so I can show you. Here's White School House Road, and here is the life of mine limit for the, well, it's actually Kinlan, I entitled it Red Wing, but these, these plans were approved by the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board for special permit. So I had copies of the reclamation plan and also the fossil mining plan for these, for the Red Wing Mine. What I've also done is I've prepared an overall plan that shows, you know, the composite of each one of the soil mines relative to each other and their location on White School House Road. So south to north, here's Von der Leeuwen through here, here's the parcel, here is the soil mining limits, life of mine, approved life of mine limits. Here's Lebowski, approved life of mine limits here, and then here's the Red Wing property through here, and here's the approved mining limits. Not to get into too much technical detail, but the way that I prepared, mathematically prepared this plan, so that it was, so that it was accurate, I did field survey work that combined all the information available on the plans and related it to themselves. So I did field work that, field survey work that tied the life of mine limits, the boundaries for all these three properties together, utilizing some GPS technology, and then was able to prepare that composite plan and provide that to Duchess County Planning, which is all the tax mapping system. I put on, on the same system that is, that the county planning uses for the tax mapping, and that is how county planning ultimately prepared this plan. It was based on my field survey information, accurate field survey information, and that is, you know, within, I was, it was because of, I had limitations, exact boundaries, I didn't go on people's property, but located boundary information along the road to tie this in. It's plus or minus a foot or two on, on all the relative positioning of these parcels.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks very much, Mark.
We have a sign-in sheet, and everyone who wants to be heard will be heard. Everyone was given guidelines for providing public comment, and I'm going to start with the sign-in sheet that I have. If you haven't made this sign-in sheet, you can sign in, or after this, these sheets are done, come up and just sign in before you speak.
Do you want to quickly review the guidelines?
Yes. The guidelines, the purpose of this meeting, it's a public hearing, to give you a chance to speak to us before we take action, and I think that we'll be holding this public hearing open until we take action. I don't think it'll be until our second meeting in January at the, at the earliest. The county has to come back to us with their decision on, on the maps that we've referred to them, and they, we gave it to them a week or so ago, and they have 30 days, and we'll have a reorganizational meeting as our first meeting in January, and then we'll pick this up sometime after that. And if we need more public hearings or more opportunity for you to speak, we'll certainly do that. But this is an opportunity for us to listen carefully to what the public has to say about the proposed action, so that we have information to think about as we move forward to make our decision, and we'll have to take time to do our own research based on public comment. I've asked that everyone sign in, that everybody wait to be called, that you introduce yourself for the record, and also let us know where you are from. You don't have to give a street address, but town of residency, and if you're, if you're here to speak on behalf of an organization, we ask that you name that organization. Please speak clearly at a measured pace, because we will be taking notes and listening. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. It's not transferable from one to the other. We want to make sure that everybody gets to be heard. Speak once, and if you want to come back after everyone's had a chance, that would be fine. Please be courteous, just the, no personal attacks, only address the board. It isn't a dialogue or a debate. You're here to give us your comments and concerns. It says avoid repetition, and I know sometimes that's, that's difficult, but if one speaker has already said exactly what you want to say, you may, for, for the sake of time, want to just agree with it and go on. Any written comments you have, you could give to me, and I'll keep in the folder. I have a, a number, about three dozen, three or four dozen letters here, which are entered into the public record, not so much by me reading them, although if you guys want, I can go through and say who wrote them and when. They will be attached to the minutes of this meeting and published through our email blast and on our website, and will be available in the clerk's office for anybody who would like to read them, but they will be published on our website. And these have all been given out to the Town Board members. I have been reading every letter that's come in. I have been responding to emails that I receive, so we're taking all of your comments seriously and giving it our best consideration. So would anybody else on the board like to speak or have any questions or anything to say? Ellen? Okay. First up, I have Michael, I think it says Trimble.
I just have a short statement I'd like to read, and this past ring I made a presentation to you.
Maybe it's not on. It's our first one. Is it on?
No. Is there a thread? Is there a button on this?
Fred, can you help us?
Oh, wait a minute, I found a button. I think that just disconnects the back.
Now you've broken it.
It's the planning board budget, isn't it?
Bear with us, everybody.
Is that better?
No.
No.
You can take one of these microphones if we--
Is that any better?
Yeah.
Well, that was yours.
That was mine, yeah.
Take that. Okay. All right. This past ring, I made a presentation to you requesting that the mining overlay district, as designated on the town zoning map that was adopted in December 2009, be corrected to embody the recommendation of the town's Comprehensive Plan. That recommendation on page 5.16 of the Comprehensive Plan states, and John read that, so I'm just going to repeat the first sentence. Examine and improve regulations in the town zoning law concerning mining-- "Examine and improve regulations in the town zoning law concerning mining activities, extractive operations currently permitted in the 3A District by special use permit, and amend the law to further restrict such activities to existing active mines." It gets worth noting that the decision to do this was made five years ago. We're not asking for a policy change. We're asking for a map correction. The current mining district overlay map fails to restrict mining to existing mines. In addition, it exceeds, it excludes areas of currently existing DEC-permitted mines. The map correction that is the subject of the zoning amendment now before you will correct these two errors. They will meet the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan while supporting the negative declarations under secret that accompany both our comprehensive plan and this amendment. I appreciate your moving this matter forward, and ask that you adopt this zoning map correction at your earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred. I have Frank Dougherty of LaGrangeville, next.
I'm Frank Dougherty. I am the president of Red Wing Sand and Gravel, Red Wing Properties. I've been a lifelong Dutchess County resident, and I currently reside in LaGrangeville. And here are my comments. Red Wing Properties was founded over 45 years ago by my father and uncle. Over 20 years ago, we purchased the property on White Schoolhouse Road, the Moran Parcel on the southern portion of the property in 1988, and the LeBoski Parcel in 1993. We bought this property with the notion that we would hold it until such a time that we needed to utilize the reserves. In the meantime, we leased the property to excavation contractors, first Haywood, then Jeff Decker and Sons. We acquired the property under the name of my uncle Vincent Kinlan, who acted as our agent. In 2002, we started working on expanding the life of mine area, and that is when we conducted the first turtle study. We submitted an application to expand in 2009. DEC insisted that we do an extensive study for Blanding's Turtle. We trapped over 300 turtles over two years. Only three were Blanding's Turtles. While we conducted that study, we were granted an interim permit, allowing us to create a nine-acre lake on the 37-acre life of mine area. When we decided to move forward with the site, we changed ownership over to Red Wing. We had, for over 20 years, utilized the access road owned by the LeBoskis. When they found out that Red Wing was the actual owner, they revoked our privileges to use the access. This is the main reason our application for a special use permit was denied by the planning board. Now the town has started proceedings to limit mining to only those areas permitted by DEC. We strongly object to this change in zoning and the reduction of the mining overlay zone. Red Wing needs to expand the life of mine area in order to gain access to White Schoolhouse Road via our southern entrance. If this change in zoning is approved, Red Wing will have no access to our reserves. This action will cause significant harm to my business, as well as take away good quality sand and gravel from the market. Sand and gravel is in short supply in the lower Hudson Valley. Where will it come from if this zone-out is approved? Some will say, "I don't care, as long as it's not in my backyard." But consider this: having to go 50 miles or more for these materials puts four times as many trucks on the road. We bid our materials in every town in Dutchess County and beyond. Last week at the Town of Clinton's bid opening, there were only two bidders, Red Wing and one other. This is a prime example of my comment about sand and gravel being in short supply. We all need sand for ice control in the winter. An article in yesterday's Poughkeepsie Journal discussed dealing with snow removal. It mentioned that salt is harmful to the environment, and that we should use sand and gravel to treat icy conditions. Just last week, President Obama called America's infrastructure embarrassing. All the more reason that we need these materials, and they need to be obtained locally. Mining sand and gravel is not harmful to the environment. It does not affect water quality or quantity. Our activities will not affect the village of Rhinebeck or tourism within the town. Our trucks will not go that way. Red Wing has a good track record with DEC. We are proud of our past reclamation. We have created lakes and parks in East Fishkill, Beekman, and LaGrange. We always give back to the communities we work in. The need for sand and gravel is regional. Our products are used in many construction projects, such as Red Hook Schools, Maris College, the Culinary Institute of America, Yale University, Albany Medical Center, Columbia University, Hudson Yards in New York City, West Point, Yankee Stadium, the World Trade Center, and the list goes on. This action to change the mining overlay zone is targeted directly at my company. It is spot zoning, and has already caused great financial harm to my business, and will potentially harm others, particularly J.D. Vonderleef and Sons. In spite of this, we continue to pay over $20,000 a year in property taxes for a property I can't even use. Keeping the mining overlay zone intact as it is now will allow my company to continue its business. Without it, we are in danger of going out of business. Please consider the livelihoods of my employees and my numerous customers when deciding how to vote on this zoning change. They all contribute to the economy of our local area. Don't zone us out. Remember, if it isn't grown, it has to be mined. Think about it. It's true. Thank you.
I have Richard Vonderleef, next.
Hi, my name is Richard Vonderleef. I am the president of J.D. Vonderleef and Sons Incorporated. Our family business is four generations old, and has been serving the local community for over 70 years. We currently own 135 acres of agricultural land, which is our home and the home of our beef cattle farm. If the town passes new zoning laws that restrict boundaries and prohibit expansion of soil mines, our company will not be able to supply our business and the local community. In the past 50 years, our company has mined approximately 23 acres of our 135 acres, and has left behind beautiful ponds which create great habitat for wildlife. We have not had an expansion on our property in over 25 years. In the next couple of years, we will need an expansion, we will need to expand our mine to other parts of our property. If sand and gravel products are not available locally, they will have to be imported from further away. Did I mention that we supply material to the Town of Rhinebeck and the Village of Rhinebeck Highway Departments, Dutchess County Highway Department, and other municipalities? Next question. How much will it cost taxpayers to import highway material from further away? Four times the distance, four times the cost. 10 times the distance, 10 times the cost. Highway trucks traveling distances burn more fuel, wear out more tires, more time spent driving, less production working, greater risks of accidents, increased road congestion, wear out expensive trucks. Your trucks, taxpayers' trucks. When sand and gravel, when sand is not available locally, or trucks don't have time to travel the distances to get it between storms, will they use straight salt and other chemicals? These will cost taxpayers even more money, and will increase environmental impact. As for any other issues with soil mining, I consider myself an environmentalist. We have dug hundreds of ponds and lakes, and never polluted the aquifer at any time. Please look at our past performance. We stock trout in our waters. We plant winter wheat for the deer and the turkeys. If the town passes these zoning laws and we lose our business, who from the town will call my employees and tell them they don't have a job? What would you do if you were in my shoes? Should we sue the town? Sue the members individually? Not a path I want to take. I never thought I would be in a position where the town that we have served for 70 years would put us out of business. My business now, your business next. Where do you draw the line as to what politicians can do to us? The Town of Rhinebeck says they want to preserve open space. Someone has to pay for it. If we cannot, if we sell out to development, no more open space, no more farms? Affordable housing, hm, not in this town. The zoning change will increase the cost of excavating. The sand and gravel products will be four to five times as much as they now are for driveways, for septic systems, footing drains, utility lines, stone for concrete, topsoil for lawns and gardens. At the September 24th Planning Board meeting, the proposed zoning amendment was voted on. One person was in favor of this. One person was against it. One recused, one absent, and three abstained. The three that abstained were due to the lack of information on the topic. The Planning Board failed to submit a report within 60 days, and the proposed zoning amendment was automatically put on the town board's table. I would like everybody in this room to remember that when you go to the polls to vote, to make sure to elect people who put the good of the community before their own personal agendas. Everyone here, well, I guess I can't say that. I'd like to thank everybody here for coming to support us tonight. Thank you.
I have Kelly Vonderleef, next.
Hello, I am Kelly Vonderleef, daughter of Richard Vonderleef. I am a current pre-med student at Maris College in Poughkeepsie. I reside in Rhinebeck, as I have my whole life. I'd like to point out that according to the November 24th to December 4th issue of the River Chronicle, and I quote, "Rhinebeck's proposed mining amendment to restrict gravel mining within the town is moving steadily forward with an expected adoption date around the beginning of the new year." And this does not sound like, this sounds like a previously accepted amendment, not one that is in the process of being revised. I'm here to urge you tonight that you need to support our local businesses. This is more than just a mining overlay change. Local businesses supply not only jobs, but careers to our local residents, which is especially important to me as a student, because the job market of Rhinebeck is my future. I will be living in Rhinebeck. They also support, they also have longtime support for local organizations, like Crew, the Whale Watch, our local 4H, the Dutchess County 4H, Boy Scouts, the Rhinebeck Airdrome, the Neighbors Gun Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the American Legion, the list goes on and on. You'll be losing support if we do not have these local businesses. If you fail to support them, who else is going to support them? Local businesses is the riches of the Rhinebeck community. This decision that you're taking into account tonight is more far-reaching than just refining our zoning laws. The definition of a community is a group of people living in the same place, having a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. By passing this amendment and surrendering a small business, which is both an interest and a goal of the community, you're compromising the integrity of Rhinebeck's community. Thank you.
I have Peter Hardman, Rhinebeck, next.
Peter Hardman, I live on White Schoolhouse Road, Rhinebeck. This letter was, is from my wife Sarah and myself. "We urge you to adopt, to approve the amendment to the mining overlay district, which will align it with the town's comprehensive plan. As we know, the plan was developed after surveying all Rhinebeck residents. It was a well-reasoned and widely documented document reflecting everyone's concerns about how Rhinebeck would evolve into the future. It did not attempt to alter any practices current at the time, reorganizing their contribution, recognizing their contribution to Rhinebeck's vitality. A mining expansion will change Rhinebeck forever. Rhinebeck's very nature will be undone, and there will be no going back. You have a responsibility to the future as envisioned in that plan. You too must look ahead and preserve the special balance between the rural countryside on White Schoolhouse Road and its surrounding more active areas, with their varied tourist attractions, including many small businesses which depend on the visitors to Rhinebeck."
Thank you. Can I ask that we hold applause, and we can, thank you. We can applaud at the end. Spiro Chumas, Earth.
My name is Spiro Zachary Chumas. I'm a taxpayer in the village and in the town. And I'm a local mason contractor, and I have been involved in construction in this community for almost 30 years. And without the support of people like Vonderleef and Decker, my business would be severely impacted. But I do support, and I want to publicly say that I do support, we don't allow big boxes to come into town. The impact of a large soil mining operation could be devastating to that part of town, which already has some adverse environmental impacts. This would just add to it, and it would be extremely bad. And based on some of the decisions that have been made over the years, being a landowner of the east side of town, I don't particularly feel like being treated like a junior partner in our planning process. Because the west side of our community tends to get amazing impact and amazing attention to detail when it comes to the protection of the local environment. A huge soil mine in this area would be devastating. But to eliminate a local operating family that's been here for all this time would be almost, in my opinion, unthinkable. I don't know how that could happen, but I know that there's, there are some technicalities here, and maybe this is a deal with the devil. But is it possible that this small-time operation, that is, I would suspect grandfathered in and has been here, in spite of the way this is being played out, could be allowed to expand in small ways that would service the community, since they're obviously already grandfathered in? And there have been exemptions in the zoning laws. I'm not going to be specific right now. But we have seen exemptions to allow existing operations and activities to continue. Why would that not apply to someone like J.D. Vonderleef? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Teresa Velardi. Again, please hold your applause. Teresa?
I'm writing this letter in support of the proposed change of the mining overlay district map for the Town of Rhinebeck. I and my husband have lived on White Schoolhouse Road for 20 years. We have invested in the renovation of an existing house, landscaped the property, and spent hours gardening. We take pride in creating a space that complements the surrounding beauty of this windy country road. A road that connects both the hills to the west and the farmland along the edge of the wetlands nearby. For an article in The Landsman Kill and About Town, I interviewed members of the LeBoski family, learning much about their long history farming lands on both sides of White Schoolhouse. And Richie Vonderleef has graded and plowed our driveway, and we have always considered him a good neighbor. I have worked all this time at Bard College, where in recent years, young faculty and students have made this road an important link in their cycling itinerary. All of this is another way of saying that an expansion of the, of potential mining has no place on White Schoolhouse Road. We were pleased when Rhinebeck's town board adopted the comprehensive plan in 2009, which gave precedence to maintaining the town's rural character and to protecting and preserving valuable wetlands and animal life. We understand that with this plan, mining will be now limited to existing mines for the life of those mines. I've come to understand that the mining overlay mapping of the area that Red Wing proposes to develop was mistakenly left out of this recommendation. I just want to say, too, that I appreciate the town's willingness to correct this mistake. I also want to acknowledge the board's patience with ongoing discussion of this matter over the course of almost a year. The board's steadfast and persistent investigation has been remarkable, and we are thankful for your presence.
Louis Armuro, please.
My name is Louis Amaru. I live on White Schoolhouse Road. And I will probably violate one of the suggestions about repetition because I do want to say that the guideline that talks about repetition was a good idea, but one thing should be repeated over and over again, that this is, in fact, a correction of an error that was made. A mistake was made. The other thing I want to comment on is that I listened with great attention to both Rich's talk and his daughter, who I have only seen at a distance up until tonight. And I'm pleased to know that she has every intention of coming back to Rhinebeck to practice medicine, which is what I see seeming to be suggesting. I think that's great. I do want to say just one thing, and I'm going to direct it even though it's personally at Rich, namely, this is not a plot against you, Rich. This is not a plot.
You keep the comments to the town board and not personal?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I do want the board, I'm sorry, that was a mistake on my part. I do want the board to know that this is not a plot against Rich Von Derleth. He has been a good neighbor. He's an intelligent and resourceful man. I do take issue with his remark that this will run him out of business because this is only a fractional part of what is a rather large business that has nothing to do with selling sand. I think that an intelligent and resourceful man like Rich, who has been a good neighbor and who has demonstrated his good neighborliness by using his land in a prudent and frugal way, he has worked incrementally, he has not been interested in expanding the truck traffic. We do not fear him. We are very concerned about the large business that wants to destroy the character of our road and destroy the quality of life that we have enjoyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gregory Manino of Rhinebeck.
Hi. My name is Greg Manino. I live in Rhinebeck. I work for Red Wing Properties. I think it would be a fault to go forward with this. I think Red Wing, since I've worked for them, has shown to be a company that looks out for the communities they work in. They look out for their employees. The communities that they work with benefit from everything that they do in it. And I think since the beginning of the onset of this whole project, when I first heard about it and saw the stuff that was online, it's been sprinkled with misinformation, people talking about things that were outright lies. The kind of character assassination that I saw online seemed to me to be people spreading, it seemed like terrorist kind of stuff. It just, it just made me, it was appalling to me. And I think going forward with this is going to harm innocent people, it's going to put people out of work, and it's going to do things that are irreparable. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Evan Quimby of Rhinebeck.
Hi. I'm Evan Quimby. I live in Rhinebeck. And actually, most of what I was going to say has already been said, so I will just say that I really agree with the gentleman that was here previously. I can't remember his name. I think that a local business that has been here for so long and who has served the community for so long, including myself, but many people in the community, really deserves to stay in business. And I don't know everything about this issue, but I do know that this hubbub has really come in light of the expansion by Red Wing. And I think that that, the companies that have been here for the length of time that Von Derleth has been here should be allowed to stay in business and to, you know, pursue their livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two names here that are crossed out. If at the end of this you want to come back up, that's fine. I have a, I'm sorry if I'm not saying it correctly, it looks like a Larry Comenda.
Hello. My name is Larry Comenda. I live in Red Hook, but I grew up in Rhinebeck. I went to Rhinebeck School, been here my whole life, except for the service in the military. I would like to say that I am against this proposed amendment because of the fact that it's going to put someone like the Von Derleth Gravel Bank out of business. If an amendment is made and it's supposed to improve and correct things, that's okay, but it shouldn't be to the detriment of a local business. You certainly wouldn't pass any legislation or any amendments that would affect the stores in town saying they couldn't sell things to outsiders because we know that what that would do to Rhinebeck. Well, that's kind of the same thing that you're trying to do to Mr. Von Derleth. I know that he's put his heart and soul into this business. He loves what he does and, you know, it's a, it's a good business. And also, I would like to say that even the people that are for the amendment have all stated that in a way, they don't want to see the Von Derleth Gravel Bank go under. So there must be some kind of happy medium somewhere that you can work on to make everyone happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Bernstein. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Bernstein. I am counsel for Red Wing Properties, which you probably know since I've written a couple or three letters to this board and the planning board. The action that the town board is considering, the town is considering, that would amend the mining overlay district is just another example of how the town has unlawfully interfered Red Wing's ability to conduct its business. The proposed action may well interfere, and we've heard that tonight, with several other businesses exposing the town to a great deal of potential liability. Previously, the town planning board denied Red Wing a special use permit despite the fact that DEC had already issued Red Wing a permit to conduct its expanded mining operations. The proposed action, which is an attempt to zone out Red Wing's business and would have the impact of zoning out others, other businesses, would significantly exacerbate the harm that the town has already caused, potentially subjecting the town to even greater liability. Abduction of the mining overlay district amendment would be unconstitutional and would subject the town to litigation that will result in significant financial liability for the town. As explained in my prior letters, which are attached to the letter I just handed you, the highest court in this state, the Court of Appeals, has repeatedly held that ordinances similar to the one that you're considering must be struck down as unconstitutional. Thirty-four years ago, in fact, the Court of Appeals stated that a zoning ordinance cannot prohibit an existing use to which the property has been devoted at the time of enactment of the ordinance. If a zoning ordinance has that effect, it's an unconstitutional taking for which the town and ultimately its taxpayers must fairly compensate all of the affected property owners. So you say, well, all of Red Wing's property is not being mined, all of Von Derleth's property is not being mined. Well, it doesn't matter. The proposed amendment to the mining overlay district would constitute a taking by restricting mining to only existing active mine sites. The ordinance would prohibit the owners and operators of parcels on which the mining occurs from accessing the reserves. This would basically put an expiration date on the ability of any of these companies to access and sustain their businesses and livelihood. Now, again, you may say, well, again, that may not apply to mining, but you're wrong if you think that. The courts have actually treated mining differently, just simply because of the way mining is conducted. You don't simply open up an entire 100 acres or entire 135 acres and mine it all at the same time. You do it incrementally, as the Von Derleth has done and which Red Wing has done as well. And the highest court in this state has recognized that, that the unique nature of mining and the mining industry requires owners and operators of sand and gravel pits and quarries as a matter of practical and economic necessity to mine only portions of the parcel while keeping others in reserve, which is exactly what you see. The court said that it was unrealistic and unreasonable to require a mining company to actively mine all areas within its property before a zoning like this, zoning amendment can take effect. So in light of that, the court, again, the New York State Court of Appeals, the highest court in this state, has said that the owner of a parcel that has been dedicated to mining for a long period of time has demonstrated an intent to mine the whole parcel, and they have constitutional protection afforded to them. Now, interestingly enough, I talked about the 19, the 34-year-old case. There actually have been more recent cases than that. The comprehensive plan was adopted in 2009. The comprehensive plan was adopted a year before two additional Court of Appeals cases were decided on this very issue. So I would suggest to you that to the extent that you're correcting a mistake, the correction of that mistake is illegal because the comprehensive plan, to the extent that it seeks to do what you're doing here, is illegal. And it's also interesting to me that that comprehensive plan was adopted in 2009, but it came to the attention of the board just recently that the map was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. I find that pretty curious, that that occurred soon after the town learned that Red Wing had an expansion application before the DEC. And we all know that the town knows about that because it's commented on that, you know, in open session.
Sir, you're at five minutes.
I'm almost done. Yep, I will. Here, Red Wing's parcel clearly qualifies for constitutional protection. It's spent a great deal of money doing environmental studies. Mr. Dougherty mentioned the Turtle Studies that have gone on for several years. We've submitted a mine permit application, as the town knows, to the DEC, which is pending, that has cost thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars that the town will be liable for if it passes this law and adopts a law that in fact is a taking. That's strong evidence of Red Wing's manifestation, and Mr. Decker and others can attest to it, of the intent to mine the entire parcel. The purpose of the law, in my opinion, is singular, and that is to put these businesses out of business. And this amendment should not be adopted. It will expose the town. I looked today at the town budget, and this will expose the town to a significant liability that the town simply cannot afford. So for those reasons, and for others stated in my letter, this law should not be adopted. I would ask one other question, and that is whether or not, since the public hearing is going to be held open, whether additional written comment will be accepted by the town during that period of time.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephen Potter.
My name's Stephen Potter, and I'm president of Potter Consulting in Boston Lake, New York. I'm a geologist primarily involved in environmental impact assessment associated with natural resource development and extraction. I have extensive expertise in technical, regulatory, and legal issues regarding the mining and reclamation industry. Prior to starting my own business, I spent over 30 years at the New York State DEC, 25 in the Division of Mineral Resources. I'm here tonight as a private citizen, and the views that I will present are my own and not those of DEC's. I'll preface that statement by saying that my past experience with Red Wing Properties and Frank Dougherty were primarily due to my work at DEC. I found Red Wing Properties in general, and Frank Dougherty Jr. in particular, to be among the best operators that I dealt with, and I dealt with operations all across the state. They were among the first operators to focus on reclamation of areas affected by mining, and as you are aware from previous speakers, have reclaimed and donated large reclaimed areas back to various local towns throughout their history. They took this component of the mine land reclamation law seriously and reclaimed land affected by mining concurrently with mining. Prior to 1991, concurrent reclamation was not mandated by law. With respect to zoning, it had always been hoped that local governments would work with state government agencies and identify areas of known aggregate resources and plan for their protection and development. Unfortunately, the majority of local governments have utilized their zoning powers to prohibit mining instead of working with state agencies and local mine operators to protect these valuable resources that they could be mined. It's been my experience that in most instances, these decisions have been challenged in courts, and other than spend large amounts of money on legal fees, local governments have not succeeded. It's also been my experience that local governments that have instead chosen to work with the regulatory authorities and mine operators during the permitting process have often reaped benefits in that they have had input into both the actual mine planning process and the ultimate reclamation outcomes. Unfortunately, aggregate resources are only located where they have been deposited geologically. We've lost valuable resources all over the state because areas were zoned indiscriminately without thinking about the resources located there. Large tracts of aggregate resources lay underneath parking lots, cities, and other types of development, rendering them useless. My experience with Frank Dougherty showed that he was a reasonable operator and wants to be a good neighbor. Frank resides in the area, and unlike many large multinational corporations that have acquired family-run operations throughout the state, is approachable and takes an active role in issues such as this particular one. Most corporate operations do not take this route and often are just represented by corporate attorneys. This is important because I've seen many family-owned mining operations sell their assets to large multinationals because they could no longer afford protracted legal proceedings. I can assure you that it's a lot easier to deal with a local company than a foreign-owned company that has deep pockets and will spend freely on legal action. Mining companies like Red Wing provide a valuable service that often goes unappreciated. The demand for aggregate resources will only increase as the population increases. It's essential and beneficial to have local sources. The ability of any mining company to stay in business depends on their ability to have resources on hand. Almost every mining company has land set aside for future mining. They've not affected all that they own because it's always been preferable to keep the amount of land disturbed to that needed for the present time. I'm afraid that if local governments take the route of changing their zoning to prevent mining operators from accessing lands that they have owned but have not affected by mining, new operations will permit every acre of land under their control, the first time they apply for a permit. This is not the manner in which mining should occur. It's not good for the operators, the environment, or the general public. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Dave, I'm sorry, it's McGee.
Good evening, and I'm Dave McGee. I want to thank through the board Mark's fine work here. I think the technical analysis that he's done is really helpful in us understanding the issues. I've lived in, excuse me, I've lived at the intersection of Slate Quarry Road and White Schoolhouse for 42 years. And I know that gravel mining has occurred around the corner from me for at least 10 years before that, maybe 1960. There has not been, to my knowledge, there's not been an environmental contamination report out of that area. I consider it as an asset, a gravel bank is an asset. Yes, I hear their separator activity occasionally. I see their trucks. I see their trucks frequently, but these events are supporting construction activities in the area, and unless you want to ban construction activities, you’re going to find those trucks on our roads anyway. Let’s agree that gravel mining is not a victimless operation, but our zoning helps protect us. So it’s viewed as, once the process is completing, you’ve basically ended up with creating a pond or lake. In short, the practice itself is not so much of a worry, it seems, but instead, it’s the fear of a lightning quick spread of the activity to wet Red Wing’s sand and gravel that seems to be causing all the agitation here. Our primary concern are the real issues surrounding land use, water contamination, emissions, seismic activity, and possibly noise pollution in the area, which up until about four or five years ago was becoming increasingly populated, but seems to have, that activity has quieted down quite a bit now. So the number of trucks on the road in the past year or two are far fewer than the number of trucks we’ve had in the past. What I’d like to do is, I’m pretty much in favor of these mining operations, and I want to ask you to reconsider going forward with this proposal. I think that within the zoning regulations, we do deem to correct any missed detail, but basically, we should contain the mining operations within the mining district, which is 360 acres, I guess. Manage them carefully through zoning and ordinances to control their activity, but don’t ban them outright, because ultimately, this is what this amendment does. Thank you.
Thank you. an Andy Reed from Reinbeck.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Reed. I reside at 4 Jardam Court, which is immediately off White Schoolhouse Road. I’m writing to express my dismay at the direction the town of Reinbeck officials are leading us. It seems that all too often, we as residents are being told what we can and cannot do, even on our own properties. The reason I’m writing today is to strongly urge this town board to reconsider action, which it seems ready to enact concerning further restrictions and regulations on the soil mining operations in our town. Many landowners, farmers, highway departments, ours and those of other municipalities, businesses like building contractors, landscapers, septic system companies, well drillers, blacktopping companies, masons, gardeners, and others depend directly on the presence of well-run soil mining operations. Few people would admit to wanting to see a mega-mining operation move in our town, probably, but by restricting expansion and operation of existing mine operations, legitimate small businesses such as, as well as the mega-mining operations, will be hurt and perhaps even put out of business. The need for raw materials is not likely to disappear, even if the town of Reinbeck manages to close down our local soil mining businesses. The need will still be there, so people will have to travel further to obtain the needed materials. That means higher costs in transporting the materials, which will mean these costs will be passed along to consumers, and perhaps that means that our taxes will be impacted if it is a town or village of Reinbeck that is purchasing the materials. In terms of human impacts, to overzealous regulating of existing soil mines, it is very possible that small businesses will have to close. The workers they employ will be out of a job. The businesses that contribute to our tax base will be reduced. Families will become disheartened and look elsewhere to conduct their business. My proposal is to carefully consider reducing the size and expansion of existing operations rather than enacting a law that would ultimately impact a soil mining business so greatly as to cause it to close entirely. There are several such small operations who have served our community well, and with respect for the environment, for multiple generations who will be hurt and possibly eliminated from our business community if you board members act too rashly on this matter. I would strongly urge you to vote no loudly and clearly on this matter. Please consider that you are to represent the wishes of the community and not your personal agendas. Please don’t force honest, good, hard-working people out of business tonight. Thank you.
My name is Leonard Anis, and I work for, actually, I live in Ankrum, but I have worked for Red Wing for the last 30 years, and it was a well-run mining company. The Dougherty family does very well. Most of what I would like to say has already been said. The only thing I would like to add is that not only you’re affecting businesses, but you’re affecting people who work for Red Wing or do business with Red Wing or the other gravel banks, and their lives will be affected by this. And that’s really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Weckasur.
I’m Richard Weckasur. I’m a lifelong resident of Reinbeck, and I’m saddened about what I read in the papers. It appears the opposition to Red Wing has caused all of this controversy. The Von der Leef family has been a local business for as long as I can remember, and they have operated within the rules and the law with no controversy. I believe you’re doing a great injustice to this family business by restricting them to extinction. I hope you can find a way to rectify this and allow them to continue and still satisfy your agenda. Thank you.
Yeah.
I live on 3 Jardam Court, Reinbeck. I haven’t lived here very long, but long enough to know that I think you’d be making a poor decision by passing your new zoning law. I have a hard time believing that you guys would want to take away a business or part of a business from a person that has, families built it as long as they have. I know I own a small business, and I would be very disappointed if a community would try to pass laws or zoning regulations that would prohibit me from continuing doing what I’m doing. More or less, most of the things I want to say have already been said, and I would strongly vote no against this. Thanks.
Thank you. Dawn Hollis.
I live in Sargades, but I’ve worked for Red Wing for 13 years. They’re a great company. I’m a single mother. I’ve been with them, and they’ve taken care of me through my son’s appendix. They helped me out. They paid me while I was out with him. When I had my knee operated when my best friend died, I got to fly back to Seattle with no questions asked. Was gone for 10 days. Many other stories that they’ve helped me out with, and I’m very appreciative to them. And I think with you doing what you’re planning on doing, if you do it, I won’t have a job. And if I don’t have a job, I can’t pay my bills and take care of my son. So I would strongly hope that you would vote this down and let us mine what we’ve been doing for many years. We don’t destroy the property, we take care of it. And I know that you guys have seen all of the parks that we’ve created and handed back to the towns. They’re beautiful, and those towns prosper with those parks. It’s an income for them. So you might want to think about that when you pass this. Hopefully, you don’t. Thank you.
I’m sorry, I can’t read the handwriting. It looks like John or Jan Nance Clinton Corners.
I’ve worked with the Von der Leef family and the Deckers for many years in activities that have gone on in Reinbeck. I am not in on every detail that’s taken place in all this, but they have done a lot for the community, both families. They’ve done very good jobs. They’re a small business. They do a lot for the community. They’ve done the fairs and everything else. They’re very involved. And I’d just like to see if the town could work with the families and keep things going, keep a small business going within the community. I’ve had them personally do stuff on my own property, plus in other things in the community, and I’ve spent like 35 years or so at least. I’ve seen them there, and I’ve seen them work, and they do good work. And I’d like to see them still stay in the community if they could. They’ve had a good business, and I’d like to see them stay in business if I could. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Dougherty.
My name is Paul Dougherty. I’m retired from package payment in Red Wing. I live in La Grange. Some of the things that I wanted to say have already been said, but I think it’s important that we realize it for infrastructure, for our roads and our bridges. Local aggregate is very important. Regarding the parks, the five parks that we’ve created are not just for the youth of our communities. We’ve created about 10 miles of nature trails. A lot of adults walk their dogs, bike ride on them, hike on them, and so forth. If every town decided to outlaw future mining, where would we be? Where would our economy go, our country? It’s just not realistic to shut down mining. And as someone mentioned, we don’t mine an 84-acre lake all at once. This type of facility for future generations would be a terrific habitat for wildlife, recreation for the local community, and so forth. So I request that you think about that before you pass an unjust law. Thank you.
Thank you. I’ve reached the end of my list. Let me check and see if there’s any more, or would people just like to come up? Linda Farber, I think you’re next. Oh, gosh, I have a whole, yeah, no, sorry. Oh, I apologize. I skipped Marie Welsh.
You might want to take some breaks. You just let her go and sign up.
Taking a three-minute break? What sign up break?
Marie, we’re going to take a break. Let people sign up, and then I’ll, I apologize. We’ll take a three-minute break. I did, I missed two. I skipped. The list here, I think we, and again, I apologize, I skipped over Marie Welsh and Larry Hoyt. So Marie, I think you’re next. If anybody’s reading from a written statement, please, you know, be sure to give me a copy. Written statement, if you’re reading from a written statement, we’d love to have a copy for the permanent record.
Hi, my name is Marie Welsh. Many of you know me as a local land surveyor with a business in Red Hook. My mailing address, my home address is Elizaville, but I do own a large piece of property in Reinbeck and pay significant taxes to the town. My main concern about this whole project is that everybody’s bringing this law into conformance with the comprehensive plan. Somebody mentioned earlier that the reason the comprehensive plan was passed the way it was is because the people of Reinbeck voted and said they wanted to see open space. Well, I love to see open space, too, especially at somebody else’s expense. You know, if I have somebody, if somebody else is paying the taxes and it’s wide open, I love that, and that’s great. I look at this comprehensive plan, and somebody mentioned that Mr. Von der Leef is mining outside of the mining overlay. Well, that’s, to me, it looks like the mining overlay is about 250 feet from the property line, and yet DEC lets you mine 25 feet from a property line. So my contention is that the mining overlay plan should be changed, not to match, not the law changed to match the overlay, but the overlay map changed to match what’s actually taking place. You’ve got three gravel mines that you can see none of from the roads. You know, people talk about the aesthetics, but they’re all on large pieces of property that are significantly set back from the road. So it’s not changing the aesthetics. Everything looks the same. You’re still seeing the same woods, the same trees. When the overlay district, when the comprehensive plan and the law were passed, it occurs to me that a lot of flaws were found in that law. And I think, rather than changing, you know, adding this law to change the plan, the plan should be changed to accommodate the existing gravel mines, that people can utilize the land that was already deemed set aside for mining. DEC approved certain areas, said you can mine this. Now the town’s going to come in and say, “Well, we’ve got to shut it down, so we’ve got to stop.” Well, what’s our avenue of doing that? Well, it doesn’t match the comprehensive plan. Okay, let’s change the law. I think you should change the plan.
I’m Larry Hoyt, and I own a substantial piece of land in Reinbeck on Slate Quarry Road. I’m also known as Larry Berger. If you drive out Slate Quarry Road, you’ll find a sign that says Berger Lane. That’s my folks since 1937. Von der Leef has been here many, many years. And I listen, I’m sorry, I’m looking wrong way. What I’m hearing and what I’m reading is that you’re trying to put a small company out of business to stop a big business from coming in. That’s all I have to say.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, what’s up with the applause? I mean, we’ve been listening.
Please, okay, I’m trying to just not be so rigid here. It’s, we’re a small town. People are emotional, and we can be kind to each other.
I’m somewhat redundant, but very brief. My name is Linda Farber. My husband, Ed, and I live at 289 White Schoolhouse Road, and we are here tonight to support, and I really want you to listen to these words, action from the town board to correct the zoning map, bringing it in line with the recommendation that was already passed in the comprehensive plan five years ago, restricting mining to a specified area. This is not agreeing to or against mining, it is making a correction to the already functioning comprehensive plan.
Can I ask, please, hold the applause, please, everybody. Sue Greenberg.
Hi, I’ve lived on White Schoolhouse Road for about 15 years. My name is Sue Greenberg. And first, I just want to mention that this amendment does not restrict mining any more than if it didn’t pass. So the perception that that’s what this is doing is incorrect. This is basically correcting an issue with the map. This is not changing anybody’s ability to mine any differently if it didn’t pass. And if you would look at what the law says, you will see that for yourselves. What I did want to say is that I’ve been, and we have been very vocal about our feelings opposing extensive mining expansion in Reinbeck, regardless of who is proposing a large-scale, industrial-level mining expansion. It’s not the small expansion we’re afraid of, it’s the 125-acre-plus mining expansion. Specific to White Schoolhouse Road, we think it will be devastating to our quality of life due to hazardous, excessive road traffic, noise and dust. of life due to hazardous, excessive road traffic, noise and dust, property devaluation, and the overall loss of rural, safe, and peaceful community, as well as a negative environmental impact on our resources and habitat because of the extent of that huge proposal of a mining expansion. Therefore, we support the town board in correcting the error in the zoning map of the mining overlay district so that it will follow the recommendations of Rhinebeck's comprehensive plan that was already adopted in two thousand nine, which limited mining to existing mines. We appreciate the town's commitment to preserving the very essence of Rhinebeck, the special character for which we all live and visit here, and we implore, implore the board to adopt this amendment and for the town residents to support it. And getting back to just one comment, there was some statement from Mr. Dougherty's attorney that said that there is a twenty-five, that there is a response to a twenty-five-page response letter from the DEC. The reason that is pending is because Mr. Dougherty did not respond to it and has not complied with it, not because the DEC wanted to approve it. Anyhow, that's it.
Thank you. I would remind the speakers that you're addressing the board. I think this is a Duncanberg. I can't read the.
Hi, my name is Leslie Duncanberg. The only thing I want to say is that everything for mining, against mining, tonight, in my opinion, is irrelevant. We're not amending anything. We are correcting a mistake in mapping. All of these comments should have been made in two thousand nine. They don't seem to me to be relevant now. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Westler.
I would urge, I live on Bowlenbecker Road, which is a couple hundred yards from the proposed mining change overlay thingy. I just wanted to say, I, I came here, yeah, I urge you guys to look at the discussions we've been having for the last ten months. Tonight is, is an anomaly where the last ten months, as some of you may have been here, we've been talking about this and talking about this and talking about this, and suddenly people care, and I respect that, by the way. I respect anybody who cares about their environment and about, about the town they live in. But I, I just want to point it out that we, you can go back and look at, I don't want to go about what I have already told you sixteen times. Just if you would, for the record, read my comments, Charlie Westler. But the other thing was that, what I got from this thing is, and I did realize that everybody's very passionate about their lives and their businesses and stuff. But frankly, I've been in business for a long time, for thirty years, and when things don't go my way in the city, for instance, I came from Los Angeles originally thirteen years ago, and when they changed the way, they, they made it difficult for me to do business in L.A., I didn't go out of business. I had to move a few miles over to the left, or I had to go about six miles over this way, but I didn't quit. I assume that Red Wing is not going to go out of business because they can't have one piece of property, and I understand it's difficult for them, and I understand it's a burden, but I hope that they just don't quit because we go on in our lives and we move on. The other thing is, you know, what I learned tonight was that everybody wants to sue the town of Rhinebeck. Nobody wants to talk to the town of Rhinebeck, they just want to go to court.
Thanks, Charlie. I have Sue Greenberg down again. I'm assuming it's a redundancy, but we'd wait if he wanted to come back. Again, I have trouble reading the writing. It's a Charles, it might be Godfrey or.
I'm a, I'm a Mylan resident just outside of Rhinebeck, and I would just like to say I moved here ten years ago, immediately introduced to the Von der Leef family for the needs for my farm. I've been buying materials from them, I don't even want to say how much, for the past ten years. They've also assisted me in my farming operation, and to lose them, I don't know where I buy my stuff yet. I use his excavation services, I use his gravel services, and his farming. And I don't want to see them go out of business. I don't know about who's talking, whose rules, whose overlays, but if there was a lot of talking going on, I don't think all these people would be sitting here tonight arguing to keep somebody in business. It's important, it's a family business. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Kim Godfrey.
Hi, my name is Kim Godfrey, and I also am a Town of Mylan resident. As Charlie said, we've lived here for ten years and we're introduced to the Von der Leef with, for the first year that we, we've been here, we've been a regular customer of ours. And this is a beautiful map, and I understand the correction, but this is more than just a map and a correction. This is a, is a local family business that serves many other local family businesses and municipalities. And clearly Rich respects the property and is as passionate if he's only mined twenty-three acres out of one-hundred-and-thirty-five that he has the right to. So he's in, as much of an environmentalist and, and passionate about this as everybody else. I'd also remind you that if his business, every member of his family, from the person who started this business, has been a Town of Rhinebeck member, has been educated here and now works here, and I am sure that Rich would like to pass this business on to his son, and I would hope that he has the opportunity to do that.
Robert Murray.
My name is Robert Murray. I am a Town of Clinton resident. However, I see a huge chunk of Mr. Von der Leef's farm from my front porch. Many of the great issues raised, I think I tried to cover in a two-page letter to the board, I've highlighted just a couple of things. One, the decrease or loss in current mining operations in Rhinebeck will result in a negative environmental impact with the increased emissions from trucks running from four, people have suggested four times, ten times, very, very much so, ten times farther. Additionally, increased admissions and energies expended to repair our roads, heavier, heavier trucks coming longer distances down your roads. Sustainability, the comprehensive plan is a complex book. There are many, people have found many problems or issues that, that they, they found contradictory in the plan, specifically with zoning. I would note also, though, the comprehensive, comprehensive plan dictates the need for green design and promotes sustainable practices. While the town has not yet developed an implementation plan for green design requirements outlined in the comprehensive plan, current green design standards and practice dictate local sourcing and minimized transportation of materials. That's really a big deal in the sustainability world. We, we try to, you know, we buy our vegetables local, we buy our materials locally. It's just very much in, in direct contradiction to the comprehensive plan to, to rid yourself of a valuable local resource. Farming, and I'm skipping past promoting local businesses, people have done a great job speaking on that issue. Farming, the Von der Leef family is not new to farming. If, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Von der Leef, but Mr. Von der Leef Senior, who passed away earlier this year at the age of eighty-six, worked on his family's farm before he worked in the mining business in the nineteen forties. I would say today, is it Matthew, your brother, is no doubt able to raise cattle on that land because the land has multiple uses that complement and sustain each other. So to put him out of business is also to move one of the very last farming activities in our town out. So I would encourage the board to work together with the residents. That's what, that's what community and fellowship and being a community is all about, and, and keep everyone happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Brad Keel.
My name is Brad Keel, Rhinebeck resident. I've known the Dougherty family, they're, they're, they're very honest people, they're respected people, what they've done in the past. Their, their prior projects are a statement of themselves, but my main concern here tonight is Von der Leef. You're talking third and fourth generation family here. You're talking about Matthew, who decided to come into the business because he thought the business was going to be there. Good probability this is going to take it away from him. Here's a, here's a fine young, outstanding young gentleman that wants to remain in Rhinebeck. His grandparents were here, his parents were here, his great-grandparents were here. His sister Kelly wants to stay in Rhinebeck. Very good possibility that this is all going to be taken away from them. Rich, Rich and I, well, I'm a little older than Rich, but Rich, Rich will make it for another couple of years, but Matthew is going, is depending on this property for his income, for his livelihood. A lot of the projects that the Von der Leef do, I kind of take offense with the gentleman earlier that says, well, they'll find other things to do. A lot of the things that they do depend on the gravel mining for the other projects that they do in, in the Town of Rhinebeck, supplying the town with gravel, supplying the Town of Clinton with gravel, a lot of the local towns. You take that away, it's not only going to impact the Von der Leef family, it's going to impact every taxpayer in the Town of Rhinebeck, Town of Clinton, because all this gravel is going to be, have to be brought in from other facilities much farther away. So I would implore you people to take a really good, hard look at this before you pass anything. Thank you.
Mike Harcourt.
Mike Harcourt, White Schoolhouse Road, basically ground zero. As far as an extensive mining, and we've had the pictures of the big trucks and all that, and it's been out there, my question, I guess, to the board is, the Von der Leef have been here this long, they have the land to do the same type of operation that they've been running, or, correct me if I'm wrong, probably another fifty to a hundred years. Why not allow them to continue the type of operation that they are operating, to allow a business to go on for Matthew's generation, for his kids if he has kids? I don't see how that has a great environmental impact. The land is beautiful there. The planning board was out there, they couldn't believe how nice of an operation it was. To allow Red Wing not to operate, why can't there be a checks and balances in there? That's what government is supposed to be, correct? Checks and balances? Why isn't there a checks and balances to let an operation of Red Wing operate to what Mr. Decker ran before, when he leased that? Why can't they operate under the same criteria that Mr. Von der Leef's been running on all this time? Why do things have to change? Just a question for the board. And the impact all the way around for this community will resonate for decades to come. And it hinges on this board right here. Thank you.
Cam. Tom Gardner.
My name's Tom Gardner, I guess you've just heard that. I live on White Schoolhouse Road, and I've heard a lot of people who live on White Schoolhouse Road already attest to the fact that at current mining rates, we don't have a concern. The trucks are not running up and down the road, not making a mess. I've been out to Rich's, his operation, picking up stone in my pickup truck and so forth. One thing we have with the Von der Leef operation is we don't have to project what might happen. We know what's going to happen. They've been there for four generations. They do a very small mining operation, and when the mining operation is over, there's a beautiful pond usually, some rolling hills near it, and seeded, okay? The, the thing is, really boils down to a quality of life issue. I can live very well with the amount of trucks that drive up and down White Schoolhouse Road. That's a bad way of phrasing it, up and down, because I don't see them. All right? It's not really a problem, and it serves the needs of our community. Where I have a great deal of concern is if our community decides to take it on their own to supply the needs of Yale University. I heard that stated as a big plus from the Red Wing speaker. I don't really care to serve the needs of Red Wing, or of Yale University with a huge truck rolling past my home. So I would just like to say that I don't know exactly what this all means as far as, I'm sure you put a lot of time into it, but I would say it's quite apparent from what I heard from the people who live in the community, that it boils down to really a quality of life. We want no more truck, no more truck traffic on the road so that we can supply other communities. Von der Leef have been here that long that, I've been here forty years, okay? We would all do good, do well, if our stewardship of the land was at the level of the Von der Leef's stewardship of the land. And it's no mystery what's going to happen in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kevin Derland.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Derland from the Town of McGrangevale. I'd like to note that I'm actually Red Wing's competition and Von der Leef's competition, but I've happened to know both of these business owners for my entire professional career. I'd like to say that both of them are excellent stewards of the land. I'm also a gravel bank owner, and as a steward of the land, the reason that we don't mine the whole property is because it opens up the whole property. Our, our personal gravel bank, which is about twenty miles away, is all cornfields right now, and if we had to open up our whole property to mining, the whole thing would be open, we wouldn't be able to grow corn and make hay for horses and things like that. I'd just like to point that out. Also, sourcing locally is much more sustainable than sourcing from, say, sixty miles away. Now, my gravel bank happens to be twenty miles away, which is another twenty miles away from our actual home base, I would say, and that's because towns have unfortunately foolishly forced us to go further and further away to source our product. So I'd just like to say that both of these businesses have been around for a long time, and the, the Red Wing business is a family business, and they employ a lot of families. And they're very important to our community, they do a lot of work, give back, and are very generous, and I'd like to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Rich.
Hi, I'm Susan Rich, Rhinebeck resident. It seems to me that we're going ahead of ourselves. This meeting is just supposed to correct a mistake that was made in the map of the zoning board or whatever, but when Red Wing bought the property, I'm not sure if they knew that there was a restriction as to if they could expand, but if these companies, I think the whole point that the people in Rhinebeck do not want any additional traffic or any additional expansion without going through due legal process and having more input from the community. Everybody is okay with what's going on at the present. We're not wanting to shut down any companies or, this whole meeting was just to correct a mistake that was discovered recently, and if, it seems like Red Wing bought the property, I just want, would question whether they knew at that time what the map entails and if they could expand without the town board's approval or disapproval. So that's all.
Thank you. Cam.
Michael Tremble, against Lake Quarry Road. I'd just like to make a few corrections, I think there were a few misunderstandings here. First of all, if nothing is done and the map remains the way it is, neither Richie nor the Lebowski mine can be expanded, that that red line is basically it. So this particular issue is not going to end their ability to mine. I think the real issue is getting material so that they can continue with other aspects of their business. The Red Wing mine up here has been permitted.
Are you saying that there's no additional mine? That's the existing?
If this stays the way it is, there can be no mining outside of this red line, if it stays.
The red line is our current.
If the town board decides to do nothing, there can be nothing further. This mine up here, DEC has given a permit to Red Wing to put a nine-acre lake in there. That permit was given by, I believe, this past spring by DEC, I think it's a five-year permit. They did not get the special use permit from the town because the people's property they wished to cross, the Lebowski's, chose not to have a major truck line, truck road go over their property, which they certainly have every right to do. It turns out there was no easement, there was no right of way, no nothing obligating the Lebowski's to do that. Now, Red Wing does own this property in here.
Michael, you have to get the mic.
They own this property right here. They do have frontage.
Michael, you have to speak into the microphone.
They do have frontage onto White Schoolhouse Road that they could use to access that mine, and they could mine that right now. They will have to modify their DEC permit, John Petronella has told me that, but that's what's required. And then there would be material still available locally from that permitted mine by DEC for that nine-acre lake. Also, personally, I'd like to say that there is no desire to in any way, shape, or form put anyone out of business. I'm probably more prejudiced towards Richie and his family because they've been tremendous neighbors, I've been there for 40 years. I certainly, the last thing in the world I would want to see is anyone put out of business, including Red Wing. They have a right to use their property as well, but this is the reality that we have right today. We had two other people who came before the town board to amend the zoning law, to allow them to do something on their property that the new zoning, this thing's sinking, the new zoning would not permit. John McGuire for his subdivision, which has now been approved, and that's going forward, the core group people up there on the old pitcher property and the old greenhouse complex, so that they could have an event center up there. That has happened. Just what you have here, nothing is written in stone, and as I guess we were saying earlier, stone isn't necessarily forever anyway. You can amend a zoning law, you can come forward to make changes. It is a process, it can be very complicated, it can be very expensive, but it can be done. The only thing this is doing tonight that is being proposed is to bring this map in accordance with the existing law, the existing comprehensive plan. That doesn't mean at some way down the road that people can't get together, sit down, and work something out to make changes if they feel it's in the best interest of the community. This doesn't close the door, and it shouldn't necessarily close the door, but you have to have your zoning map be in compliance with your special use permit, I'm sorry, with your comprehensive plan. That's how the state has set up the whole zoning process. You have a comprehensive plan, your zoning law is derived from that, it's not the other way around. So I just, there are just a few misconceptions here about what this would actually do, and it doesn't close the door on future discussions, future changes, if that's found to be in the best interest of the community. I reiterate again, no one wants to put anyone out of business.
Can you just show us again what the current is, and what would it be if this amendment was changed?
If the amendment is changed, the existing mines are the ones that would then be the mining overlay district. They would still be restricted to the Lebowski property, to the Von der Lees property here. My understanding is that the permits that they're currently under run out, you know, the material will be gone. The big issue here is, they need material, whether they're getting it from their mine or someone else's, because they're not just in the mining business, they're also in the excavation business, construction, things of that sort. This mine has a permit right now, a valid permit with DEC. All they have to do is use their property to access their mine, and they're back in business.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Robert Murray, I had, wanted to take that opportunity for a clarification, I think is necessary. One of the earlier speakers mentioned that the planning board was, this issue was sent to the planning board by the town board, and the planning board, I don't want to say didn't know what to do with it, but in fact, it was reported that there was one nay. The planning board voted they should, one person voted they should not accept this map change. One planning board member that they voted that they should adopt the planning, the change. The planning board chair, Michael Tremble, recused himself because he lives in the local vicinity, that was very professional and reasonable, I think. And three planning board members abstained. That was reported in the local papers as being, as the planning board not being able to handle it, therefore, it was deemed or perceived to be approval or lack of rejection. But in fact, on September 29th, and I provided a copy, I know the board members all got it, but I provided a copy with my letter, the planning board issued a report to the town, listing those abstaining members, and the yea and the nay, and at the bottom it says, "The resolution was defeated." And I think, I think the town board, before you proceed, I think, to vote on something like this, I think you need to look back and get the rest of, I mean, the boards in this town, the CAB, the planning board, the town board, need to be aligned, and I think if there's, if you need more time, and things need to be discussed and planned, you really need to be aligned. To have three people abstain, and to have the planning board send this report back to you saying that the resolution is rejected, says something. And I don't know that it's responsible to move forward with this documentation in your hands. So I personally would love to see things move forward in a community where everyone agrees that you've chosen the right solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I want to see if anybody else who hasn't spoken yet would like to speak. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? Would you please come up?
My name is Joe Kurthoys, and I appreciate all the hours that village and town people document and not get paid for it. I know you have great concerns, as well as the rest of people have. It's really hard to explain what it's like to be a person in a third, or fourth, or fifth-generation family. It's a real challenge to walk in someone's shoes because he never did. I don't think anyone really wants to put the Von der Lees out of business. If I was in business, and I owned a piece of property, and someone wanted to change a law, as long as they worked with me, and they felt that it was proper, and I got along with the law, but right now, it comes down to money. I don't really see a lot of big changes in Rhinebeck. I've been here a little while, and I really think that if I was going to have an agreement or disagreement with someone, I'd want to do it between each other and not have to have an attorney or litigation. I really feel bad for the people on the road that's being impacted, but if I were to buy a house, I would go to the local coffee shop and kind of find out if there was a dump around there, or what was going on with the property that I was interested in. I can remember that there has been a mine, I don't really call it a mine, I always called it a gravel pit. I thought a mine was coal and pollution and things like that. But anyway, there was gravel pits there, and I really feel bad if you didn't know that and your realtor didn't tell you that. But I really don't want to see litigation because we can't afford that. I see right here, the people in this room would say are backing up the Von der Lees and a business to be able to survive and do a business, but if we were to have a litigation, it would be bad, because I'm paying my taxes, you're paying your taxes, and to lose a battle, I would love to be the attorney, because he's going to get paid no matter what. And really, the attorney that loses should have to pitch in to the taxpayers, but we won't really go there. I would really like to see people get along. I know a lot of people don't agree with what I say always, because I can't think of everything, but I really like it when someone comes up to me nicely and says, "Hey, Joe, maybe you ought to look at it this way," because this is how I see it. And it really is helpful when you have two heads. My grandmother always used to say that to me, and look at me and say, because, especially when one's a saphead. So I really don't want to see any sapheads here. I have seen village boards fail by having domino theories affect us and having a CVS move in. I know the local bank moved out because they couldn't afford to keep having litigation against the board because they were losing time in motion. They wanted all the building to be one facility, and they moved to Jefferson Plaza. So all those people no longer shopped in the local shop of the Kilmers' IGA, and they left. And now we have a CVS. It's not that great. I don't know Mr. Dowdery, I do know Irish people are nice. If my mom was still alive, she would agree with that. But I really would like to work with somebody and get to know and bail a find out. Gee, the Von der Lees harvest or reclaim, I'm not an attorney, but I do know that they could probably tell you how many yards they take per year. Let's kind of work with that. What was your busiest year? Was it a billion yards? Or was it just 100 yards? Let's try and work with that, and please, let's get together and not have it cost the taxpayers any money. Because I'm sure the Dowderys would rather sit down and talk about it than have their attorney, I don't know if he's $250 or $450 an hour, but, and I don't know what our local attorney costs, but I sure would like to cut that out. So I hope this helps, and I do know, again, I feel sorry for people on White Schoolhouse Road, but it really was a gravel bank before they bought their home. And I've also spoken to people about how they want a light on Route 9 where Hobson's used to be because it's so hard for them to cross the road. Well, if they knew that before they bought the house, maybe they should have bought the house on the other side of the road. I've made poor decisions, and my father says it wasn't stupid. If I do it again, it is. So if we can, try and work together, you know? I don't think anyone's flying helicopters into here to try and make deals with the government, but I'm pretty sure we should try and work things out. Thank you very much again for all your time. And I really appreciate it.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Red Wing only has about two years left on their present mining site, and our sand doesn't just go to Yale University or West Point or the World Trade Center. In the last 15 years, it's gone to over 300 colleges and universities in the New York, Connecticut, northern New Jersey area. Every one of the schools in Dutchess County that's had an addition put on, or a new school, has been using our sand. I have to comment about, when Red Wing purchased the property, it was Richie Von der Lees' uncle in 1987 that pretty much directed me to buy the Moran property, and I have to thank the Von der Lees for that. So it's not that we just purchased it, we had it in the bank for future mining, and we do need the product. Thank you.
I think Sue, and then, did you want to speak again?
I just wanted to mention that we are all quite aware that there was a gravel pit on White Schoolhouse Road. Thank you. But that gravel pit has never been a problem in the past. We've never had excessive truck traffic in all the years, 15, 20 years that we've all been there. Our concern is the 100-plus trucks a day that we were told we should anticipate if the mining expansion goes through, and that's what our concern is. Also, you've all talked about your families, and jobs, and your homes, and just so you know that in those houses on White Schoolhouse Road, there's a whole bunch of families who are concerned about their homes and being able to stay there as well. So we understand, and we're really not all on opposite ends, we're all just trying to survive.
I used Jeff Decker many times on our house on White Schoolhouse Road. Back in the late March meeting, I asked the board to ask Ms. Dowdery, "How many trucks a day would be on White Schoolhouse Road?" He said 60, I didn't hear 100. He said 60. So we did the math, and it's a truck every seven minutes. So if that's what you'd like to have in front of your house, you know, it's okay, but I don't particularly care to want that, because my house value is going to be nothing, and it's just been my life to save money to build this house, and now I can't sell it, and I still have a mortgage.
Would anybody else like to speak, address the board? Charlie?
I'm not supposed to reiterate, I just want to say that a couple people have commented...
Did we introduce her?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm Charlie Wesler, on Bolenbecker Road, which is just parallel to White Schoolhouse, on the other side of the thing. But the gentleman, very nice gentleman, and funny gentleman in the green sweater, said, you know, "You shouldn't move someplace." I did extensive, extensive research. I talked to Decker about him expanding, I talked to other people in the neighborhood. There was that large property that belongs to, now I've discovered, to Red, to Red...
Red Wing.
Red Wing, was under the name of another person who was a farmer. Now, this is what I discovered from talking to the neighbors. Obviously, I got my information completely wrong, but I swear to you, on everything that's important in Rhinebeck, that I did the research before I built the house, and before I built it across the road so I could cross it, because I thought about it, and I didn't want to live next to a mine. And the truth is, Decker had, up until he stopped mining a couple months ago, or stopped using it as a depot, it was very quiet, and I don't, I'm not on White Schoolhouse, but I could, I could only hear them beeping, backing up with the beep sound once or twice a day. It was nothing. So we knew, and we just don't want our house prices to plummet.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just say a few things.
Sure.
Just wanted to clear up a few misconceptions. First of all, there will probably never be 100 trucks a day coming in and out of that.
Just 16.
Well, I can't tell you how many. If you open a donut shop, and someone asks you, "How many people are you going to expect a day?"
Wait, you know what?
What we have to do...
Excuse me.
Right, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're addressing the board, let me finish, not the audience, and this isn't going to go back and forth. You give us your comments.
What I would like to say is...
Can you speak?
Right now, I'm operating two pretty large plants. One of the plants had eight trucks one day this week and the other one had about 15. And we're expecting snow. So the trucks are running around and we're just not getting them in. And I don't really think we're even going to have 60 trucks a day, to be honest with you. But I just want to show you something here. The reason we have not answered the 25, can you hear me everybody?
Yes.
The reason we have not answered the 25-page document that we received from the DEC, and that is not unusual, Region 3 DEC is the most difficult in the state to work with. And they review things very thoroughly. But the reason we haven't answered that is we are revising our application to expand. We are taking out this field, this entire field. Everything basically from here up is what we're going to apply for, right in here. And none of this can be seen from White Schoolhouse Road. Not one bit of it. Because it's all downhill from this perched wetland. Okay? My access will be right here, coming in right along, this is a driveway that already exists and that's the access that we're applying for with DEC. But I cannot get that access all by itself. I need the expansion in order to get that access. They won't give it to me. They call it segmentation. So I have to apply for the expansion in order to get my driveway and get on my own darned property. So that's the reason for that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to break that up. Thank you.
Lou?
I've been up here before, Louis Amaru. I live along on White Schoolhouse Road. And I probably will be somewhat repetitious, but I do feel a necessity to be repetitious. Namely, this opposition by the concerned people of White Schoolhouse Road has never, never been an attempt to deprive Rich Von Deleef of his livelihood. I think in his heart of hearts, he knows that. We are not so much concerned about him. I think he's an honest man. I use the words resourceful and intelligent to describe him, and he is that. His son is a very, very talented practitioner of animal husbandry. There is a lot that they can do with that property. And I commend them for the years they have spent here. I think that Sue Greenberg and, excuse me, and I think it was Mr. Gardner, Mr. Gardner's remarks were, I thought, very apropos. They were actually quite elegant in some ways. And I think, I think that really is the crux of it. That we are concerned about a variety of things that we're afraid might change as a result of Red Wing coming in and doing large scale. We can't get a straight answer, and I understand that he doesn't, isn't able to project the future for us. But we have history on our side, which basically is that for the last 20 years, trucks have not been a problem on White Schoolhouse Road, largely because of the efforts of Rich Von Deleef, who has been concerned about these things and his incremental use of his land. We also did not have any problems very much when Mr. Decker was running, was leasing that land. And part of that was because the economy went downhill. And so real estate suffered, people were not building houses. So that probably helped quiet that. We've gotten reasonably comfortable with the quiet. There's not going to be a lot of truck traffic during the winter, but in the summer, things will change. Speaking of change, values change, people change, attitudes change. And the things that seem relevant to a lot of people today about environmental factors, quality of life, are listened to today. They were not listened to in the days when basically business could do whatever it felt like doing. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Any of the board members, any questions or comments?
One more comment. Sorry, one more question, question the board. Oh, really?
Everybody, we've been patient with everybody, let's just.
No, I want to hear more booing. That's really fascinating.
No, no, no.
No, I have just one question to the board. Do you know, and this is a question, I don't know the answer to it, so I'm just curious. Did Richie, not Richie, sorry, Pat, Richie, did Jeff Decker quit and move away from Rhinebeck when he lost the ability to use that mining area? But we should find out because if he did, then we have a problem.
Decker still lives in Rhinebeck. But then he quit and he leaves up.
Everybody, please, 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 stop the cross shouting. We've been civil up until this point. Any of the board members have any questions or comments or?
Not appropriate.
Not appropriate. Anybody else want to speak to us? I think we've heard a lot tonight, we've got a lot to think about, we've got a lot of work to do. We have to decide what we want to do next. And as I said, nothing will be happening anytime soon. And I think we have a lot, certainly heard, I've heard a lot here that I haven't heard before. And I want you all to know that, you know, I'm mindful of everything that was said tonight. You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
I think this was tremendously helpful. I really do.
Yeah, I know.
A lot of good information came out tonight and I'm really glad. Yeah, thanks for coming out. See you soon. You're very welcome. Anytime. You can call me and email me anytime. Okay. Hi there, how are you?
Before everybody leaves, we're going to make a motion to continue the public hearing. Can I, I want to do that while everyone's here. We haven't set our meeting, can I just, we're going to, I wanted to do this while everyone's here, just so that it's not done after everyone walks out. But we should make a motion to continue the public hearing. John, we don't have our second meeting set in January yet, and that's when I think it will be. We can continue next week if we like, but I don't know that we'll have anything new by then.
Well, you can say.
Do you have a recommendation?
Second meeting in January at the date to be published.
I think it'll end up being the fourth Monday in January and it'll be posted. But may I have a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. It will continue the public hearing, it will continue to be held open. Thank you, thank you, welcome.
If we sat down with this guy.
Thank you, thanks for coming, thank you.
For better or worse.
We're still in meeting, so we got to wrap it up. I have, I had something on here to discuss for emails, I'd like to table it. Basically, I wanted to talk about how we're all going to have to start using our town email and what we have to do to start doing it. Because we're not in compliance with the DOS.
We're going to have to wait for Joe to get here to have this discussion.
No, I found a way to get Joe on.
Kind of, Joe's just going to have to do it. Someone's going to have to give him a lesson.
No, no, but I found a way to get him on it that'll work for him.
Well, as long as it works for him. I'm more interested in it working for the town.
I haven't even tried it again because I've been so frustrated.
You're going to have to help us too.
I will.
He will. He helped me, he got me right on.
Well, I got right on too, the first time.
Right, exactly. That's the problem. And then, right, exactly.
I don't log on, it comes right, it comes right to my.
You, okay, what do you?
Yeah, let's do it another time. Because it's like 9:16 right now.
We can talk, I just, that's what I want to.
We'll be talking emails probably till the cows come home.
I could set you up in 10 minutes.
He did, he set me up immediately. So thank you for that.
But we're moving over to exchange anyway. I want to go over to a better server.
Okay, and that's great, and we'll get that together. Also, I just want to tell you, if we want to move to have the, if we want to get the emergency number and dumb and out with our tax bills, we sort of have to do that quickly. I don't know if we can, we'll discuss.
What's the deadline?
Well, we should have passed it, we'll talk about it at the next meeting and I'll forward you some information.
I'll talk.
If not, we'll have to do a separate mailing and that's not the worst thing in the world. I don't know if we'll be ready in time for when the tax bills go out.
We can, we can get compliance signs for about 20 bucks a piece.
Yeah, I'm more interested in passing the public, you know, the local law to make it mandatory and then getting it out in the tax bills. We may have to do a separate mailing, but we can talk about that at the next meeting. And then, Elaine, I know you had a cemetery thing.
Yeah, and I wanted to table that too, simply because I have not had a chance to read through every bit of it. And I also want to forward it to you guys as well, so you can see it before we have it for discussion, and I haven't had a chance to do that either, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Don't look so disappointed, Alan.
Why?
Were you hoping we could be here until 10, talking cemetery?
I looked disappointed.
I think we have a lot to think about from tonight, and we should think about what we, you know, want to do next with regard to this. You know, we might need a meeting with our attorney. And let me talk to John and I'll email you guys and we can figure out the next steps. If there's anything else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.